The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the Denison City Council is now in session. Our invocation this evening will be given by Brett Castle, pastor of East Baptist Church.
Dear gracious heavenly father, we ask for wisdom and discernment on the decisions that will be made that will affect this community and each individual in it. I ask you, Lord, to just let your will be a parent and I ask you to give each one of these elected officials the ability to make the decision that is best for all of us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Will you do the pledge with us, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible. This evening, we have a very special guest. His name is Keegan Frisco. Keegan is nine years old and he's a third grader and he is homeschooled by his mother, Ashley. Keegan showed an interest in art very early, actually at the age of five, and began taking classes at the age of six. His art and drawing skills have grown significantly the past few years. He completes a canvas painting through his art class every one to two months and the paintings vary from his home or a treehouse to presidents, even a portrait of Jesus, that won first place for his grade at the Sherman Arts Show in September. The last couple of years, Keegan has shown a big interest in history and presidents, even going as far as memorizing all the presidents and knowing several facts and dates about each. He came up with the idea to represent the hierarchy of power in the United States, starting with the current president, Joe Biden, the state governor Greg Abbott, and our city of Denison mayor Janet Gotti. With the map of the U.S. in the background, you'll see his painting right up here. He completed this at home on his own time and was very proud of how it turned out. Me too, Keegan. Keegan is not only a talented artist, but he is a young boy with a sweetheart and was recently recognized at his church, Park Avenue Church of Christ, for learning the books of the Bible. Keegan's proud parents are Justin and Ashley Frisco and he has two siblings, a brother Crawford and his little sister Madeline. Keegan, we are so happy to recognize you as our very first ever guest artist. So if you will meet me at the podium, I have a presentation to make. I want you to notice Keegan's detail that he has in his picture. He even captured my pearls, you see? Keegan, I would like to present to you a certificate of Artist of the Month. This is awarded to Keegan Frisco, a budding artist and future community leader. Keegan, we're very proud of you and we are very proud to display your picture for the month of February in City Hall. This is yours. And, you see this lapel pin that I have on? Our city this year is 150 years old and so we want you to have one of these. And this is a challenge point. There are only 3,000 of these and so when our city is 200 years old, you're going to be 59. And you may still have this and you can maybe put it in the time capsule for our bicentennial in 2072. So here you go. At this time in every meeting, time is set aside for any citizen to speak on an action item that is listed on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. We're going to rewind and we'll talk about that in a minute. We are very fortunate in our organization to recognize that what makes us special are all the team members that we have that are part of our organization. And we like to take the opportunity to recognize those when they have specific and important milestones in their career. So, Amy, where are you? Okay. Amy and I would like to recognize the following employees. Amy, are you ready?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
So we do this each quarter. We recognize employees that are meeting a milestone in increments of five. And so we are honoring six, actually seven employees tonight, three of which are present with us. So with five years of service, we would like to recognize Bobby Hoyle.
Bobby, thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you.
Also with five years of service, Fanchin Sterns.
Fanchin, thank you for all you do. You make a difference every day.
We do want to recognize Jamie Young. She is unable to be with us tonight. She has five years of service. And with 10 years of service, Betty Bridges, Karen Breimer, and Robert Ley. With 35 years of service, Mayor, we would like to recognize Barney Ruffins.
Thirty-five years, that's amazing.
And Barney, have you ever taken a sick day?
Not yet.
No sickness?
No sickness in 35 years, wow. Okay, Chris, can I set aside time for public comments now? Okay. At this point in each council meeting, we set aside time so that any citizen may speak on an action item that is listed on the agenda. In order to speak, you must fill out a request to speak card prior to reaching this point and return it to the city clerk. And we have one card, Landon Lindsay. State your name and address for the record, please.
It's Landon Lindsay. I live at 83 Shawnee Circle. I'm also president of the Firefighters Association here. I'm speaking on the consent agenda items J and L, which all the firefighters are in support of. So I know that it's on the consent agenda. I just wanted to reiterate that we are in support of those items there. I also want to thank Mayor Gott and the city council and also Mr. Smith. So in gratitude for service of the firefighters of Denison Fire Rescue, first, Mr. Smith, we want to express our bittersweet congratulations on your retirement from the city of Denison. We want to thank you for your heart towards the public service and for forging new relationships between the city officials and public service. We're truly grateful for new equipment that you guys have implemented in our department and the opportunity for us to do EMS again. We want to, I personally want to express to Mr. Smith that I want to thank him for his advice in regarding city and fire-related matters and working together to coheal. And we feel that we're finally coming together as public servants and the city in a new relationship to better improve our service and the community we serve. We will keep this momental and strengthen the bond between the city, community, and us. We will finally, we want to say thank you from the men and women of public service to the citizens of Denison. May God bless you and keep you safe in the future. Sincerely, Denison Fire Rescue. Thank you.
Thank you, Len. Charlie, we'll call, we'll recognize you when we get to this agenda item. There he is. I know he's here somewhere. There he is, down the hallway. All right. The consent agenda, we need to remove item M and consider it individually.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item M.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hender and a second by council member Doty. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item M, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on an ordinance amending Chapter 13, nuisances, Article 3, abandoned vehicles of the Code of the City of Denison, to amend Section 13-44, notification of owners and lien holders, lien holders, to add or revise certain requirements regarding the towing of abandoned or unclaimed vehicles. Chief Gudjel.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Coming to you tonight with a request to amend an ordinance. Chapter 13, Article 3, Section 13 through 44 of the City Code of Ordinances provides the procedure for Denison Police Department's response to abandoned vehicles. Currently, the wording of this section requires the Denison Police Department to send notice of abandonment. Chapter 2303 of the Texas Occupation Code and the Department of Motor Vehicles Title Manual allow for this requirement to be placed on the towing company. In an effort to streamline the process, the Denison Police Department would like to remove ourselves from the procedure of notification and place that responsibility on the towing company. We're recommending that this wording be amended to note that a licensed vehicle storage facility that takes possession of an abandoned motor vehicle under the authority of the police department must comply with all provisions of the Texas Occupation Code, Chapter 2303. Basically, we're just updating this particular ordinance to reflect state law. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 13, nuisances, Article 3, abandoned vehicles of the Code of the City of Denison is amended to amend Section 13-44, notification of owners and lien holders, to add or revise certain requirements regarding the towing of abandoned or unclaimed vehicles.
There is a motion by council member Crowley and a second by council member Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on resolution in support of a grant application to the Texas Parks and Wildlife 2022 recreational trails program to assist with funding for Phase 2 of the Waterloo Lake Regional Park Trail Enhancement. Ms. Bowen.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I stand before you to present a funding opportunity offered by Texas Parks and Wildlife Department Recreation, Recreational Trails Program. As you may recall, the city of Denison was awarded funds through this same program in 2015 that provided funding for construction of a 12-foot wide concrete path from the parking lot north towards the entry of the natural surface trails, which resulted in approximately 1,500 linear feet of concrete trail that is now ADA compliant. The scope of work also called for the replacement of a smaller wooden pedestrian bridge with a 20-foot concrete stone pedestrian bridge that mitigated erosion from a previously undersized culvert. Two trail heads were installed to allow for easier access for wheelchairs and strollers. Staff are looking to do a similar project, to expand the concrete trail from the parking lot back south towards the dam to allow for additional ADA compliant access to our lake shore, the kayak rentals, the kayak launch, and the fishing pier. The project cost is budgeted for $360,000 and the grant local match requirement is 20%. The $72,000 match would be a planned budget item to be taken from the Waterloo Lake Park Fund. As part of the award process, the review committee looks at public support for the project as part of the scoring matrix. Staff are requesting to hold a public hearing and upon completion of the public hearing, staff request council's consideration of a resolution of support for the grant project. Thank you for your consideration of this proposal and resolution. Justin Eastwood Parks and Recreation Director and I are available for any questions that you may have.
Questions for Ms. Bowen? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
I'm George Mason. I live at 2117 Park Village. Citizen of Des Moines and I'm on the park commission. And I don't, can't express enough to you what the new trail that was put in on the north shore of the lake means to the people using that park. It's made it so much more accessible for people. So I hope you'll consider doing this for the rest of the, to the east side of the park as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Now discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve a resolution in support of a grant application to the Texas Parks and Wildlife 2022 recreational trails program to assist with funding for Phase 2 of the Waterloo Lake Regional Park Trail Enhancement.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hender and a second by council member Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5B needs to be tabled until the next meeting, which is February the 22nd. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to table this agenda item to the February 22nd, 2022 city council meeting.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hender and a second by council member Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5C, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning for approximately 4.1 acres from the single-family 7.5 zoning district to a planned development overlay district for a single-family residential development on South Bluebonnet Avenue, case number 2021-150PD, Ms. York.
Good evening. As you just mentioned, the applicant is requesting a rezone from the single-family 7.5 zoning district to a planned development overlay district for approximately 4.1 acres. This is an aerial of the subject property with Bluebonnet to the east, Moyle Lake to the west. And this is the zoning aerial. The applicant is proposing 28 single-family detached homes. Some of the key standards that are called out in the PD pertain to the minimum lot dimension, lot width. So the applicant is requesting the base zoning be single-family five with the differences of the minimum lot dimension being 40-foot wide, 80-foot deep, and a minimum lot area of 4,000 square feet. The applicant is also proposing a mixture of one-car and two-car garages. This is the one-car elevation and this is the two-car elevation. The applicant is also proposing the minimum dwelling unit floor area be 1,250 square feet and they are establishing a architectural review committee to review all of the plans prior to any contractor submitting a permit with the building department. They are also proposing a minimum of at least one two-inch diameter canopy trees or two ornamental trees planted in each of the front yards. And the applicant is here, but I'm also present for any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. York? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this item? And we have Charlie Shear who has turned in a request to speak card. State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Charlie Shear, 415 West Main Street here in Denison. I think staff has probably done an eloquent job of telling you what we're trying to do in this particular development as well as in the packet. I'm sure you have all the reports that were submitted from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council might have to speed up this process. I don't see any sense in riding the horse to death, especially when I have a grandbaby waiting at home to watch cartoons.
Charlie, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Four-foot lot size, are those the 10 that are in the center?
Yes, sir. Well, the, actually, there's five, there's five lots and it's on the north border, the south border, and those in the center. They're actually, right now, they're actually 50-foot is what we're showing on the concept plan. And I think there was some confusion that this was a plat. This is not a plat. This is just basically our concept plan. We're not in the plating process as of yet. We're going to have to give four-foot dedication to Bluebonnet. So in our meetings with staff, rather than us trying to go back in and reposition and take a little footage out of each one of those lots, I said just leave those at 46 feet and you can design a house that will fit, which we can. That's not a problem. The lots themselves, I believe, are 88, 89-foot in depth and those are the, those are the smaller lots in the development. The lots to the back, the cul-de-sac lots and then the four in the middle there are actually, they actually exceed the 5,000 markets and they're 5,000-foot minimums on those lots. Our setbacks are set up, Councilman Doty, that what we're trying to create in here is a pedestrian-friendly environment. So we'll have sidewalks throughout the development. Our porches will be at a minimum of 10-foot off of the property line. The house will be at a minimum of 20-foot off of the property line and the garage door will be a minimum of 25-foot off the property line. So we've pushed the garage back away from the, from the street for aesthetics and also to keep a car from parking in the driveway and hanging over the sidewalk. We spent quite a bit of time with, with staff, with Mr. Medina and Mr. Webb when they were here, trying to come up with, with ways that we could create this, this, this particular environment. So that's, I think that the product that we have designed, and I think there were floor plans that we had, concept floor plans we had put that were in your packet that shows you, even, even with the 80, 89-foot, we still have plenty of room for a nice backyard on each one of these, each one of these lots. We anticipate more of this being an empty nester development than a, than a neighborhood where folks will move in with, you know, with children. Most of them are going to want a larger, a larger yard and larger lot. So we're anticipating this to be more of an empty nester type development.
I'm really excited you're doing something with that property. I've walked by that property for years and years and it just seemed like a great location for something. So I'm glad you're doing this.
Thank you. What we've done here is we're trying to create maybe a model for future development within the city and we're taking, even though we're, the houses are not what we would consider enormous houses, and I've always been of the opinion my whole career that just because a house is small doesn't mean it has to lack creativity and architectural aesthetics. So what we're trying to do is to create that. We're going to require in our deed restrictions and covenants, since the city no longer can enforce building materials and has no jurisdiction over that, we feel like the way we can control what's built in that subdivision is through some, some pretty strict deeds and covenants. So in that, we will require certain architectural elements. Each elevation must possess a certain number of elements that we will have on an approved list. As Diane said, we have an architectural review committee, so each plan has to be approved prior to being submitted to the city for permitting. I don't anticipate there being more than two builders in this, in this particular development at this time and I happen to be one of them. So I think we can probably keep it controlled. But what I'm trying to, trying to do with this is to, just to show, and I'm not coming up with anything original, I've been a part of several developments in Rockwall and other places, where the lots don't have to be huge, the houses don't have to be huge, but we can create a very valuable asset to the city and a community where people can, can be neighborly. That's, that's our objective and that's our goal in this, in this particular development.
Mr. Shear, you'll be on the architectural review committee?
I am the architectural review committee. But sometimes that committee argues amongst itself and it's kind of funny, but...
I'm sure. The only other question I kind of had is more of a city, city question. If you could turn it back to the non-plat kind of plat. Right there. If y'all see that we have an alleyway dedication over there behind lots 7 through 12, that my worries, we won't have any access to that. So I think as we move forward and as Mr. Shear moves forward with his plating process, that may be something we want to look at either selling, if we don't have any utilities under there, because there's, there's no way to access that. There's houses on each end. And I would hate for us to have a tree or something in there that falls on one of these homes and we have no way to get in there and fix it.
We will certainly be interested in, in taking that in. If we, if we were able to obtain that property, I could slide everything back and I think that easement's what, 23 feet, something like that? So if I had an additional 23 feet, I can slide everything back and those lots, those, what is it, 10, 20 lots right there? Those lots would all become wider when we, when we take that 23-foot and distribute them to the, to what we have there. So we should be able to be back to, I think we could be back to even giving city four-foot of dedication on Bluebonnet. I think with what we have there, we could, we could definitely be at 50-foot in width again.
There are procedures in the city's Code of Ordinances that allow for that type of transaction when right-of-way is no longer needed.
That was the only concern I had.
Any other questions for Mr. Shear? Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There may be none, the public hearing is closed. Thank you, Charlie. Discussion from council. A motion?
Ms. Ford, do we need to include sidewalks in our motion since they're not called out in the PD?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I move to approve the request to rezon the subject property to a planned development overlay district for a single-family development with the caveat that sidewalks be added to the development.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hender and a second by council member Crowley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5D, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning of 0.1377 acres from local retail zoning district to 2F, two-family duplex residential district for property located at 826... to 2F, two-family duplex residential district for property located at 826 West Crawford Street, case number 2021-177Z. Ms. York?
Thank you. Applicant is requesting a rezone from the local retail zoning district to the 2F, two-family duplex residential zoning district for their property that currently has a single-family dwelling unit on it. As you can see from the aerial, West Crawford is just to the north, Skullins to the east. Right across the street is what used to be Croker, just so you can kind of figure out where we are at. The request for the two-family duplex zoning district is an extension of the residential district that is already there, rather than going with a spot zoning. Here is a survey of where the dwelling unit sits on that property, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval for this rezone at their meeting on January 25th. The applicant is just requesting the rezone in order for the zoning to conform with the, how the property has been developed. And I'm present for any questions.
Questions for Ms. York?
So, that last thing you said, where it says it's been zoned for what it's been used, but it hasn't been used as a duplex, correct? It's been used as a single-family?
Correct. I guess it's more like for how it's been developed. It's been developed in a residential manner, so they're requesting a residential zoning district, which happens to be the two-family duplex zoning district for the extension of the residential district that's already there.
The residence is, is there now, is occupied?
I'm not sure if it's occupied. I think they are attempting to sell the property, but I'm, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if the applicant is here either to speak on that. Oh, there he is.
I have a question to speak with.
I, I need to open the public hearing. Okay. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Come forward, please, sir, and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Carl Mason, and I'm at 1904 Elmore Road in Dennison. Thank you for having me. I'm the broker that's helping the owner sell that property, and the current buyer for that property wanted it rezoned primarily so they wouldn't get stuck with a, a retail, retail space, and they would like it rezoned as a residential space. Does that make sense?
So, is the intent to tear down this structure?
No, no. No, not at all. No. It's, it's, it's been a home there since the 1940s, and I don't know why it was retail to begin with, but it's, it's been a residential property ever since the 40s. And it's been, the Grayson County has also taxed it that way as a, as a residential property.
So, since there's no duplex on it, would, would, could we have it rezoned as like an SF5, which is what it really is? Really is, it's a single-family five-zone. You know, the concern is, is changing it to a duplex, then whoever gets it can tear that building down and put a duplex on it.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Which, which is, which would, you know, there's no other duplexes, it wouldn't, it wouldn't match the area. So, I, I would be fine changing it to like an SF5, but I do have concerns about changing it to, to a duplex.
Right. That, that's fine with me, that's fine with the, the owner of the property. I represent him.
Yeah, well, I'm right there with you, too.
So, so Julie, the, the correct way to handle this would be to deny, and they'd have to come back with the request for SF5?
No, since SF5 is a less intense use than what was noticed in the notices for the public hearings, then you can approve a less intense use. You wouldn't be able to approve a more intense use without renoticing.
Okay. Let, let me close the public hearing. So, so Will, is, is that then your request to, to change it to SF5?
That's, yes. Yes, it is. I don't know all the different zoning numbers, honestly. So, it's a single-family now. At one, at one time, it was a duplex, and I think they converted it to a single-family. That was a long time ago. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council? A motion?
I move to approve the ordinance changing the zoning of .1377 acres from local retail zoning district to SF5, single-family residential district for property located at 826 West Crawford Street.
Second?
There is a motion by Councilmember Pro Tim Hander and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item 5E, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance adopting the annexation of certain territory located in the extraterritorial jurisdiction being an approximately 3.688 acre tract of land identified as Grayson County CAD property ID 378985 and located on FM 131 Dennison, Texas, case number 2021-1278. Ms. York?
All right. Applicant is requesting an annexation of the property ID number 378985 located off of FM 131. The applicant owns the two adjacent parcels to the east. They are requesting this annexation to, for the purpose of constructing an Encore electric The applicant has also requested an initial zoning and a rezoning of the two properties to the east for planned development. That is a companion item on this agenda. As I stated, the applicant is requesting a voluntary annexation of approximately 3.688 acres for the construction of an Encore electric substation, and the applicant is here for any questions that you may have, and so am I.
Questions for Ms. York? So, this is the annexation, but the planned development is actually addressed in item F?
Yes, ma'am.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Would you come forward and state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Thank you. My name's Seth Sampson, and I'm a right-of-way siding specialist for Encore. My address is 777 Main Street, Fort Worth, Texas, and I'm the representative of this item, this annexation item, and the zoning case following this. So, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions that council may have, and yeah, stick around.
Questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance annexing the subject property.
Second?
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The motion carries. Item 5F, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a request for approval of the initial zoning of approximately 3.5 acres to planned development zoning district and rezoning of approximately 3.899 acres from Light Industrial and Agricultural Zoning District to Planned Development Zoning District for a total of approximately 7.399 acres located on FM 131 Dennison, Texas, property ID 230504 and 3789585 and 230505, case number 2021-152Z. Ms. York?
That's a lot, isn't it?
That was a lot.
All right, so, now that the property is annexed, the applicant is requesting an initial, or initial zoning of that back property to the west for planned, for a planned development overlay district, and then the two properties to the east for the same. The purpose of the planned development is to construct a Encore or an Encore electric substation. The applicant went with a PD for the, so that the sole use for that piece of property is this Encore electric substation. So, somebody, for some reason, that substation goes away, quits working, or they move somewhere else, someone has to come before y'all to rezone that property. And they did this with the intent to protect the land and the residential users or the residential property owners around there. A couple of the highlights from that PD, applicant is requesting a base zoning of Light Industrial with a couple of differences from Light Industrial. They're requesting no parking requirements, maximum height is 120 feet. They are also requesting some landscaping or non-landscaping requirements. Their intention is to keep as many of the trees that they can so that they are, other than the ones that are in the way of the electric lines. They're proposing landscaping screening in the form of single-row shrubs to the north and south, and a screening from FM 131 shall be a concrete, a precast concrete screen. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the initial zoning and the rezoning at their January 25th, 2022 regular meeting. As I mentioned, applicant is requesting the planned development zoning district for the sole purpose of the Encore electric substation, and I am present for any questions, and so is the applicant.
Questions for Ms. York? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council?
My, my question is on the seven-foot chain-link fence that's going to be around, you know, our, our community's going to grow this way someday. Mr. Sampson, is there, do y'all use any kind of alternative fencing or upscale fencing of any type?
So, typically, when we do these, we, we follow the city's screening ordinances, and that's on, on this one, we, we have the, the wall that's facing the main thoroughfare there. It's masonry, precast wall is what, what we had discussed with staff.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed to the, the masonry wall, the remainder of the chain-link fence. It's going to be around the rest of the property, though. Is there any room to improve that a little bit? Do y'all use any kind of different material?
Other, other than the masonry screen wall precast that you'll find in some different areas, no. It's, our typical fencing is the chain-link fence, but it's, there are some areas where you'll find precast masonry screen walls, same height, the height doesn't change. And in this case, there, there's really not a lot back there. We, it's, it's nice that we have the trees and everything back there. They, they screen better than any seven-foot wall would, but typically, no, we have chain-link.
Well, if it is chain-link, ours, our requirement is the black vinyl painted, correct?
Or powder-coated?
Okay. Then I'm, I'm, just was asking.
Well, the, the, well, no, you, you get one opportunity at this, and that's to, to call it out at this point, to, to make sure that that, that screening is going to be what we want it to be, because as you said, our, our city is growing there, and there's going to be residential all around it. So, I think it would be, it would be appropriate for the council to request an upgrade in that fencing.
And it, so, am I hearing a specific upgrade, or is it, you, you had mentioned something, I don't know if you, something you have specs on?
I don't know, could you do like a wood fence? Something that's just...
Yeah, we wouldn't do wood, just because of the, the nature of the use, but if, if you guys have something in, in particular that you're, that you're looking for, I mean, we're opening the conversation. The, the screening is easier for us to change than obviously the use or anything like that. So, if, if there's something you're looking for that you're willing to give me now, it's, that's a conversation we can have.
Well, on your precast concrete, what, I mean, is it just a, a concrete wall? Is it kind of like what Textart uses, and it looks like stone, or what?
Yeah, so, it's, it's, yeah, masonry precast, and it comes with a stone design on it, just like stamped into it. There's, there's multiple different designs. It looks like, there's some that look like bricks, some that look like stone.
I wouldn't be opposed to that. If that's something that y'all do in other communities, I would be opposed to one that looks like brick or stone. That would even hide it pretty well.
So, just so we're clear, so you're asking for the same precast that we'd use on the, the front of the station to encompass all four sides? Is that the request?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and I think in, with the intent of moving the project forward, that's something we could agree to here if, if that's what it takes to get it approved.
Is that something y'all are covering? Yeah. On a side, we're not about screening, but with this development happening, will this also, will you change out the transmission lines there? Do you know if that's in work?
I, I don't believe any, anything will be changed on the transmission line, no. The substation does connect into the transmission line, but other than that, it's, the transmission lines are there.
Any further questions from council? Okay, so...
Thank you, Mr. Sampson.
Thank you very much.
I move to approve the initial zoning of approximately 3.5 acres to planned development zoning district and the rezoning of approximately 3.899 acres to planned development zoning district with the caveat that a precast concrete enclosure encircle the entire property subject area.
Second?
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Doty. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The motion carries. Item 6A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on approving a grant application for the FEMA fiscal year 2021 Building Resilience Infrastructure and Communities BRIC program.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I stand before you to present a funding opportunity offered by FEMA through the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and Hazard Mitigation Assistance Division for activities in local communities that include mitigating risk to public infrastructure, risk to one or more community lifelines, and enhancing climate resilience and adaptation. Staff are seeking support and approval for the submission of a project proposal to the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Program, also referred to as BRIC. The City of Dennison's water treatment plant has several incoming power sources fed from a single line from a dual sources of power switched outside the plant boundary. The plant and raw water pump station have no backup power generation service. Most of the existing plant electrical systems were installed prior to 1993 and are quickly becoming obsolete with limited availability of spare parts for repairs. In addition to the water treatment plant, half of the city and the whole city of Pottsboro rely on the Parkdale elevated storage and ground storage for water distribution. Through this project, the city plans to purchase a 1,200-kilowatt diesel generator for the water treatment plant, a 300-kilowatt diesel generator for an automatic transfer switch for the raw water pump station at Lake Rendell, the city's main source of water, and a 350-kilowatt diesel generator to serve the Parkdale ground storage, install main electrical switch gear for the water treatment plant electrical improvements, and install a SCADA system throughout the distribution system for continuous pressure monitoring. Staff identified this project as a high-priority project following the critical infrastructure issues experienced from last year's winter storm, Yuri. During the winter storm in February 2021, the city's water treatment plant lost power despite having the dual feed. Due to the extreme temperature, pumps and chemicals froze within 20 minutes. It took city staff eight hours or more to defrost enough pumps and chemicals to continue to treat the water. The ground storage tank at Parkdale was without electricity as well, which prohibited the water from being pumped from the ground storage tank to the elevated storage tank. When the, within the first day, the tanks in the city were depleted, and the system was relying on pressure from the distribution system. Due to the Parkdale Water Tower providing service... Due to the Parkdale Water Tower providing service to other pressure planes, there were vast areas of town that were without water supply for approximately five days. With the addition of generators and backup power at key locations, future infrastructure failures would be less likely to occur. The city has already engaged plumber associates through a water plant master plan to provide project management, engineering services, and configuration services for the Parkdale electrical and instrumentation improvements, Lake Randell water treatment plant electrical improvement, and water treatment plant and distribution control system. The estimated cost of the proposed project is $3,45,896 and has a 25% required local match of $761,474 that would be taken from the Water and Sewer Bond Fund. Thank you for your consideration of this proposal. Carrie Jones, Public Works Director, and I are both available for any questions that you may have.
Questions for Ms. Bowlen? Thank you. Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve a grant application for the FEMA fiscal year 2021 Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities BRIC program.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Court Rye. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 6B, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on the capital improvement project's CIP manager position. Ms. Wagner?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Of course, you're aware of the capital improvements project plan. Carrie spoke about it many times, whether it was during budget workshop or as a project update about a month ago. Those, that plan consists of large-scale and short and long-range infrastructure and facility projects. I get in trouble for not speaking loud enough, right? The proposed CIP manager will help manage all aspects of the CIP, including proposing new projects based on council, staff, and community feedback, negotiating fees and scope of work for contractors, coordinating construction activity, developing bid proposal packets, tracking spending, and finding cost savings, and more, which is very important. The position will be funded through debt services and report to the Director of Public Works, Carrie Jones, while working closely with the City Manager and Executive Director of Finance Administrative Services. Staff recommends approval of this position, and I stand for any questions.
Questions for Ms. Wagner?
Thank you. Thank you.
Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the capital improvements improvement project's CIP manager position.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene an executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law or to discuss the following: consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with this chapter and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same. Section 551.071, confer with the city attorney regarding City of Dennison versus Tico Grande LP, cause number 2021-1-001ED, county court at law number one, Grayson County. Confer with city attorney on development of property and terse number three. Confer with city attorney regarding city manager position. Discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment of duties, discipline or dismissal or to hear a complaint against a public officer or employee. Section 551.074, discuss city manager position. The time is 6:54 and the council is down executive session.